I'm going to call this meeting of the Gloucester School Committee to order. I'll remind everybody, the mission Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful in doing its flight for our learners. And I'll ask you to remain seated. Flight leads to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one mission, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oral communications, if there's anybody here who would like to address the school committee on any subject not on the agenda, this is their opportunity.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Doyle, Gloria Saffire, Mrs. Bros, I'm doing notes. I noticed that you have approval of Nature's Classroom Field Trip on your agenda.
Yes.
I'm not sure if this is something that you do every year, but just in case, I'd like to read the letter that I had written to you after the last program. I would like to report to you the success of this year's fifth grade outdoor education program. As you may know, the Nature's Classroom program is, as conducted by the Nature's Classroom organization, is no longer held at Camp Cody in New Hampshire. Camp Cody itself has instituted its own outdoor educational program. Excuse me. That being said, we had a choice to make as to which program we would be attending. We chose to attend the Camp Cody program as you are familiar with the location, the cost remained consistent with the Nature's Classroom pricing, and the Cody staff includes former directors of the Nature's Classroom program who, no doubt, are familiar with the curriculum and expectations of outdoor education. We were not disappointed. Our week at Camp Cody Outdoor Classroom was exceptionally successful. Children were kept busy and engaged, were treated with respect and compassion, and generally felt satisfied and important. The lessons students learned not only aligned with curriculum frameworks, but were presented in a manner which excited students, encouraged inquiry, problem-solving, and higher-order thinking. Students learned about community living as they worked together at every mealtime, practicing equity, good table manners, and cooperation, as well as positively interacting in sports during their transition times. The Cody staff and all the outdoor educators were professional, flexible, compassionate, organized, accommodating, and friendly, all with a great sense of humor. The kitchen accommodated any dietary restriction we could present to them, always with a smile. Our director, Trish, was easy to work with, thoughtful, accommodating, and kept communication with us open and timely. Last but certainly not least, Nurse Kendra was incredibly efficient, compassionate, professional, and flexible while maintaining a positive and jovial demeanor. I think I can speak for the entire staff in that we experienced the lowest level of homesickness, had very few of any behavioral problems, and had an overall positive experience with the current fifth graders due to all of the above-mentioned conditions. Even in sometimes less-than-perfect weather, students shared common stories, experiences, and emotions, and learned positive behavioral strategies while having a great time in preparing themselves to interact next fall in a similar manner with all their incoming middle-school peers. Finally, I can't thank enough the teachers and staff who accompanied this year's fifth grade to New Hampshire. The exemplary experience of this year's Cody Outdoor Education could not have happened without the dedicated, caring, and selfless staff of the Gloucester Public Schools. New chaperones and veterans alike were cooperative, enthusiastic, flexible, and engaged with students in positive ways. Additionally, the program could not have happened without the time and persistence that Kathy Doe put forth for the organization of paperwork involved, as well as at times Steve Doe committed to driving the luggage to and from the site. The time these staff members took from their families and daily lives, the interest and compassion they showed to all the students in attendance, and the cooperative spirit that was fostered this year and in the many prior years is a testament to the dedication they give to their careers and to the children of Gloucester. They are truly unique and gifted individuals, and I feel very lucky to work with such wonderful colleagues. We hope that the Cody Outdoor Education Program can be part of future fifth graders' experiences for many years to come, as the camp will be improving and expanding their program continuously. Additionally, Camp Cody not only provided scholarship money for the outdoor education program, they've also been very generous in providing for GPS students $1,500 scholarships to attend their summer program if interested. We encourage you to continue to consider the fifth grade outdoor education program an integral part of the GPS elementary experience. The maturity, self-confidence, independence, and overall sense of community with which our students return to Gloucester are invaluable attributes that they will carry with them forever. Some of the reactions I got from the staff up there were, "What a great week." "Thank you so much." "It was a wonderful week, and this is an experience that cannot be replicated anywhere." One teacher said, "The staff was so professional, yet they made every student feel like an important, welcome part of their community." They had taken an already wonderful program and made it more exceptional with new scheduling, less downtime, fewer transitions, upgraded dining experiences, and made us chaperones feel very appreciated. This was my 14th year of Camp Cody, and it's the best it's ever been. This program's been in existence for decades, as you know. It's what grown students remember about their elementary years. If there's been any declining enrollment, it's been negligible, and it might be attributed to our declining enrollment in the district in general. Also, we have rising AL population, so there might be a lack of understanding of the program here, and also cultural norms where they're children, they don't let them go too far away from the family. But, and we also must keep in mind that Nature's Classroom is not necessarily for all students. There will always be students that won't participate, and that's fine. We have teachers that stay back and have activities for them. Funding for some families has been an issue, but I can attest, at least at Beth's School, we have always had a policy that no student is not going to stay, is going to stay behind. No student is going to stay behind because they cannot pay. Does that make sense? Yes. We have always worked out funding for all students who have wanted to attend. We are lucky that we've always had principals who have been committed to and understanding the importance of, importance of such a program. There's also been ideas floating around throughout the years about possible building our district-based fundraising for the program. We always had, in the past, we had a spec coordinator who would have a private fundraising in her home, because she understood the importance of this program. And chaperoning does not fit in with everyone's schedule. Some teachers in fifth grade may not be able to accompany their students for a variety of reasons. Family being one of the main ones. We have always had other teachers and personnel in other capacities step up, and the fifth grade teachers take over in other classrooms. The students who stay back are afforded enriching activities that teachers organize at school and around the city. There have been a number of teachers who have, year after year, as I mentioned, chaperoned at Nature's Classroom and ensure that every student up there has a memorable experience. The chaperone's cost to the district is very little. I think it's supplemented by Nature's Classroom, if not paid wholly by Nature's Classroom. Teachers make a small amount per day, which is exponentially lower than our contractual hourly rate, and the district liaison makes a little more per day, also engaged in preparatory work throughout the year. Please approve the Nature's Classroom Field Trip for this and every year for the current and future students of Gloucester.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
At this time, I would like to ask the committee to go to the city and request emergency funding for the turnaround schools. It is obvious that they need resources in order to work on areas which has, which caused this action by the state. Excuse me. I feel that there must be an account somewhere in the city coffers that can be used to give Dr. Saffire and their principals what they need in order to turn these schools around. When young families look for a community to move to, the first thing that they do is look at student achievement scores. This information is available to anyone who chooses to review it. They do not look to see how new or how old the building's out. Having sat through countless school committee meetings, as well as many budget subcommittee meetings, I've seen hundreds of thousands of dollars spent. I cannot understand why there can't be money to be found immediately to fund student success. Listening to the dedicated, hard-working administrators in our system at these meetings, it is clear to me that they are doing everything they can to help our students meet the benchmarks. Certainly, they should not be expected to do this without being given what they need. I would like to have a formal answer in writing addressing this request. Sincerely, me.
Would you like to give the...
Actually, it's going to come to Dr. Saffire through David.
Okay.
Number one, GATS in the high school. No, it's not tight.
Doesn't have to be tight.
It's coming.
Okay, that's fine. Just, if we get a copy, that'd be...
It's coming.
Okay. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Aida. I'm here actually on behalf of CPAC this evening. I'm the Southern Mesr Co-chair. We are in the progress, in the process of establishing a panel committee, and we intend to have our first official meeting by the end of November. Thereafter, we will establish a subcommittee who will write the new bylaws. As you all know, it is mandated by the state that we have an active CPAC. It has been inactive for a long time due to various reasons. In addition to that, we are going to be hosting parent support groups, and we'd like the district to let the, let the parents know. I'm not sure what the preferred method would be, if we could send out flyers or maybe add it to the classroom job, that would be great. We are having our first support meeting next Friday at the library of One Can, and we'll alternate some days, one month, and the following month will be evenings, so that we can reach more parents. And we would really like to know who our liaison is, and it would be really perfect. So, we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. It varies from year to year how, what group of parents we get to actually push this forward, and it's been very effective at times, and it's kind of fallen by the side at times. So, I hope that you're going to move it forward.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Our next daughter of business, here's comments from the chairperson. I'd just like to say that we're going to do some odd scheduling for the rest of the year, that I think we ought to, I'm just going to let you know, the, because of the holidays. Next week, we'll have an out-of-sequence B&amp;A meeting on Wednesday night. There's also program, no, personnel.
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 Morning jet.
On next Wednesday night. Wednesday night after that is the GEF event, I believe, and some of us will be going off to the conference in High Anistia, Massachusetts Association of School Committees and Superintendent's Conference. So, we'll have only one meeting in November, and that will be on the 13th. And it'll be, and that will start at 5:00, because that's Sawyer Metal Night, and it will be at the high school. So, we'll have about, in the library at 5:00, we'll have a school committee meeting, and then we'll transition into the Sawyer Metal Awards at 7:00. In December, we will have two meetings, but they will be out of sequence. There'll be the first and third Wednesdays as opposed to the second and fourth because of the holidays. So, that's the schedule for the rest of the year. Recognizations? Do we have any? It's been quiet. Okay, we'll move on to our Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council.
So, today, I'm Katherine Bevins. I'm president of the student council, for those who don't know me. Today, we completed our Alice Drill at the high school, and I can speak for most to say that it makes you feel a lot better when you do it and complete it, and it went smoothly in my opinion. I was, it went smoothly in my class. This week has been very hectic at Gloucester High School. It is Spirit Week, Homecoming Spirit Week. Today was Wild West Wednesday. Tomorrow's Throwback Thursday, and Friday is our Class Color Day, so you dress a color depending on what grade you're in. And we'll have our pep rally Friday. Friday's also homecoming for the football game. You were all invited to attend and come out on the field at halftime. I'll be out there crowning the king and queen that they voted today in homerooms.
You're not going to share? You're not going to share?
No, I think it's toxic information. I've been having to keep it a secret all day. The German exchange students that have been at Gloucester High School, there's about nine of them right now at Gloucester High School, we're sharing with Ipswich. They go home tomorrow, so they have shouted to school, and they've all reported that it's just like a movie, and their favorite thing is the cafeteria, because it reminds them just like High School Musical. So, they're sad to go, but they really enjoyed their stay at Gloucester High School, so very excited about that. The student council, the juniors and seniors, will be going to the Student Council Conference in North Andover on October 30th. Let's see, what else? And then, the SUCO and NHS have been doing their own volunteering projects, but together they will be at the polls on Election Day, November 5th. Majority at Our Lady of Good Voyage at Gloucester High School, but also at elementary schools and such for ballot counting in the evenings, so it'll be spread out. That's all I have.
Any questions? What did you do during the Alice Drill?
What did we do during the Alice Drill? Well, for those of you who have never sat, like, I mean, never seen an Alice Drill happen or experienced it, Principal Cook comes over the announcements and explains that it is a drill, and gives a scenario of a person and the location in the building, and your teacher then decides whether you were going to evacuate or lock down. And so, for me, my classroom, we locked down, so we had to barricade the door, and they go through the process of the person is moved, so then if you decided that it was safe to evacuate, you would then evacuate, but we stayed barricaded until the person has been taken into custody. This is just a drill, and then take everything down, and we filled out an exit ticket as well. So, Principal Cook has all the information. If you're curious, there was a section of, "Did you feel comfortable after this drill? What did you like about it? What did you not like about it?" For myself, what I said I didn't like about it was the fact that I've done this now for three years, and every single year I've barricaded and locked down, so I've never actually evacuated. So, I saw people evacuating, and I'm not even like 100 percent, I know that the two evacuation points, but I don't know exactly what stairwell I'd go down, things like that. So, that was my response on the exit ticket, saying, "I think it would be more beneficial to me for them to say, 'Okay, let's all evacuate on this one,' and know what evacuation point would be at," because they are different than the fire drill ones.
Good. Any other questions?
You mentioned Throwback Day.
Yeah.
Fall back.
I mean, I also...
You're talking 90s, 80s.
I chose, I chose the Spirit Week days this year, and I decided instead of doing Decades Day, that I'd do Throwback Thursday, because then you can incorporate your throwback characters, your throwback self. I'm going to dress up as a younger version of myself, and then also the Decades Day. So, I mean, I think anyone can do whatever they'd like, so that's why this year I did a lot more like Open for Interpretation Spirit Week days instead of like...
Today's dress.
Yeah, like, or yesterday was, or, yeah, yesterday was Dress to Impress, and then Monday was Slumber versus Lumber. So, people dressed up as either they were going to sleep, or as lumberjacks. So, it was, it's been also very well participated.
Oh, yeah, I see some of you today with the Wild West. Where did they get those?
Yeah, mine was pretty good. But, yeah, it's been very well participated. I'm really happy with the turnout.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds great.
We are going to vote tonight on the wellness policy of the school store.
Okay.
We did have the presentation last week, but if you'd like, we could move that up in the agenda.
I would appreciate it, just for homework presents, but...
Okay, let's do that. Kathy, we're going to present the...
Okay.
The Wellness Committee meeting.
The Wellness, yeah. So, the Wellness Committee met on October 3rd, and we thankfully have three student representatives taking part and participating in those discussions. There were, you'll see in your packet that there are just two changes in red. One of them came through Martha Jo Fleming to add a section that says, let's see, I'm trying to think how this, I'm looking at the minutes, I'm looking at this.
Is that the fundraising?
No, I was going to do the other one first.
Lunch, retirement.
Underneath, I'm just trying to go back. Okay, underneath nutrition, one of the bullet points needed, needed to, the wording added, "If your child has medically documented dietary, dietary needs, please contact the nurse leader and the phone number." So, that's to make sure the parents know that they need to, make sure the nurse leader knows about those issues, so should be monitored. I think there's another housekeeping issue of the word principal, which is in red.
Earlier news.
Which is early on. He's school principal, designated school wellness policy coordinator, and shared compliance with the policy, and that's in section one. And then, underneath fundraising, we talked about, we had a lengthy discussion about the school store. Because of the meeting that happened towards the end of the school year, I think it was well agreed to that, you know, what the process was. Would you like to add, would you like to?
I mean, I feel like they started to understand and talked about the issues that the cafeteria presented, and how sometimes the school store actually fixed some problems, and that I was happy to do the last 15 minutes, but I wanted five days a week, because the last 15 minutes for myself, I can go to, I can go into the cafeteria and actually be able to get my lunch, eat, and then the school's snack shop would just be there if I wanted to grab something before I went to class. And there is a vending machine in the cafeteria that I did bring up, has, is open all day long, every single day, and serves like cookies and things like that, which a snack shop doesn't just say. But, no, I feel like we had a very good discussion. It was very like relaxed and well-mannered, and nothing got out of hand, so I appreciate it.
And part of the process is that, I think it's Rosa Francis right now, who's kind of the advisor to the store. And so, when things are purchased, there's inventory taken, there's reporting done, and the principal gets the reports.
I have the whole spreadsheet, and I have to bring in every, I sign off how much money I take out, and then I bring in the receipt that shows how much money was spent, which every single time, every single penny, if not a couple more. And all the receipt items are added to my spreadsheet. I have what's low of stock and things like that. I like being organized, so everything is well laid out.
It's well laid out. It's a transparent process. I think the other part that impressed me is that they're using the school store for other school-related, you know, student-related things, like selling tickets to dances.
Selling tickets to dances right now. I'm selling our senior pep rally shirts in there. We've offered the other classes to put their pep rally shirts in there as well, so I think closer to Friday as well, we'll have some other like bandanas with pep rally and beads and things like that. So, yeah, it's multipurpose.
So, so the change to the language under fundraising, I believe it's on page six, is six. That's not right. Anyway, under fundraising, we are adding the sentence first, "The senior class will be allowed to run the school store five days a week for the last 15 minutes of the lunch blocks." And then it continues to read as existing, which is, "Food and beverages that meet or exceed the USDA smart stacks in schools' nutrition standards may be sold through fundraisers or fundraisers on the school campus during school hours. The district will make available to parents and teachers a list of healthy fundraising ideas and the examples from the Alliance for a Healthier Generation and the USCB." So, I would like to recommend to the full committee that we approve the language of that first sentence, "The senior class will be allowed to run the school store five days a week for the last 15 minutes of the lunch blocks."
Do I add a little bit? Want you to put all the changes?
Yeah, the two, the two other changes.
Sorry. And the change of notifying the school nurse, which I read, "If your child has medically documented dietary needs, please contact the nurse leader at the phone number of the nurse leader." And then, the change, which is a...
Principal, not then principal.
The word principal. So, those are the changes. Nice.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Joel?
I would just suggest that we revise to say five days per week, not five days a week. I want the phrase "a week" in there in case someone wants to try and interpret it as one week of the school year, you get five days out of it.
Per week.
Per week.
Okay. Is that what I would get? Anything else? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will return to our agenda, and we are at the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like removed for, as further discussion? Seeing none.
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. And we'll move on to deliberations on educational issues. We're very lucky in Gloucester that we have a number of partners that help us educate children. A couple of weeks ago, we had in the Gloucester Education Foundation to give us an update, and tonight we have Michael DeCoaster of, the executive director of the Maritime Gloucester, and we will be, I think the next, we will be having the YMCA, my next meeting, because that's the weird one, but that's the next one.
Not the next meeting, but you want to have it.
You want to have it. And we will have other, other participants in. But, Michael, thank you for coming, and would you like to just give us a little snapshot of what's going on?
Happy to do that. Thank you so much for the invitation, everyone. We really appreciate it. Dr. Saffire, committee members, we appreciate coming here and having the opportunity to talk a little bit about Maritime Gloucester and exactly as you said, our partnership over all these many years. 15 years ago, there was a little restriction on funding for sciences in the elementary schools, and Maritime Gloucester heard and rose to the challenge, I wasn't there, so I can't take credit, but started putting together programming for all the third, fourth, and fifth grades students, and we're honored to be part of that fabric of the Gloucester Public Schools for all these years. We have worked with every third, fourth, and fifth grade student with six, up to six programmatic engagements, points of contact throughout the school year each time. They come to our site twice a year, we go into their classrooms four times a year. So, the number to remember there is 4,032. That is, 4,032 students have an interaction with Maritime Gloucester each year. Not different students, 667, or 672 students this year, but six different times. So, that's a, that's quite a number, and we're very proud of that. We had, like I said, a 15-year partnership service to the educational and science education goals at GPS. We realized that, that for the kids in Gloucester to really succeed, we had to have access to our harbor, to science, to equipment, and to opportunity, and we tried to provide that with our programming that we do. So, 15 years ago and over these years, what have we done? We've invested in our campus, in our buildings, we've upgraded our classrooms, we've prevented digital microscope lab, we've upgraded our aquarium, we've raised funds for our programming ourselves. We don't ask for any, any funds from the Gloucester Public Schools, except for, I think recently we did ask you to pay for the transportation, because up till last year, we also paid for the transportation costs to bring the kids here. And we created this partnerships with other local entities as well, so that we could offer better programming to get students out on the water, to explore and use the harbor for research. So, we're very excited about these programs that we offer. As I said, free to the Gloucester public school. Last year, or actually, let me do it this way. Over the last five years, the lineup for Gloucester Public Schools and Maritime Gloucester budget has been $580,000. That's direct costs. That's our direct cost to run the programs that we do. If we put in overhead and everything like that, we're closer to $760,000. This year, it's going to be a lot, $110,000, and we've raised that money ourselves, and we said, like I said, happy to do that. So, it's just a little bit about the history and the relationship and how committed we are to do that. I say this because I want you to understand our commitment to the schools. But, education is the focus, and that's what we try to do. So, if you don't know what the kids get when they come and see us during those six visits, I thought I'd give you a little bit of an update. The overview is, I like to say, we have a progressive experiential curriculum. That means that we have integrated curriculum that are focused on thematic units. 60 kids come to our campus out of time, we divide them up into groups of roughly 20, and we put... and we put them around their paces through the different program, programmatic modules that we have. Changes year to year, changes school to school, which is kind of interesting. For many, many years, there has been individual teachers were, kind of had their own programs, had their own science that they were offering, and we had to figure out how to adapt to that. We wanted to, we wanted our programs to be layered on top of what they were already teaching, so, so that we could reinforce what they were teaching in the classroom outside of their program here and vice versa. So we are very pleased to say that we've, we've developed these types of curriculum, but let me try this. The third grade students that came through this year did things like sea star observation, squid dissection, will do gomu chugging fossils and habitats and adap, adaptation in the classroom. And then in the spring, they're going to come and they're going to do aquarium habitats, we'll do some fish printing for a T-shirt, because everyone likes a souvenir, and it's kind of fun. But they'll also do a research vessel, they'll get up on the Ardell, and they'll go out and do harbor, harbor observation, where they'll also learn a little bit of navigation by both celestial navigation, you know, it's daytime, and, and just observational navigation while you're on the boat. Fourth graders will do living duck following communities and rain mapping and crab lab, invasive species, dichotomous key, waves all around us, and then plankton erosion and invert classification in the, in the fall, or in the spring. Fifth graders leave, they go up a level, and we do ocean acidification, algae lab, we have timely tides and watershed, we talk about water quality mysteries and things like this, and then we do, also do an exploration research festival in the spring, circle of life, and marine debris, which is becoming more and more popular. In the lab, we have them talk about, they, they do a whole module on plastics and microplastics, and we teach them how plastics never go away. And we challenge them to find a point at which they do. And then we put it under the microscope, and they realize it hasn't yet, and we keep going, but, so fun stuff like that. We work on problem solving and critical thinking in our thematic units and collaborative work, so the kids work together, we'll bring them out to the harbor, they'll work together to try to figure out how to get the trash out of the harbor, as we're working to sort the trash before those, these modules, so we keep working on that. Different kids learn in different ways, so what we try to do is mix it up on the campus. There's a, there's a little bit of classroom teaching, there's a lot of hands-on activity, there's a little bit of just running around, but we have very short timelines, so we try to keep that to a minimum. But the teachers, like I said, have always been very receptive to our talks about developing our curriculum and working with them. So in the future, and I'll wrap with this, these couple of items, we hope to upgrade our wet lab, so that, the aquarium was closed during the winter, it's kind of cold, it's sea pocket aquarium out there, it's not covered. So we're hoping to upgrade our wet lab, so we can have the year-round wet lab experience for those classes, classrooms. Right now, it's a limited one, but we can expand that a little bit, and we're hoping to do that this year. And we are very excited to hear that there's a, and I don't know enough about it, so if I'm speaking out of turn, I apologize, but to hear that there's a, the FOS system was included in the programming, you know, moving forward, and we're looking forward to working with you to develop our curriculum, because the FOS program, I'm going to rewrite from your website here, engages students and teachers in enduring experiences that lead to deeper understanding of the natural and design worlds. I'm going to borrow that from our website, because that's exactly what we do, if, if no one caught on to that. So we're excited to have a more collaborative future with you. I still lament the fact that most parents don't know what we do, and our ability to talk to the parents through the schools is limited, so we're working on that. But I wanted to leave you with one quote, because it came to me today from one of your own, one of the teachers, and I thought it really summed up what I like to hear. "The students at Gloucester, Gloucester Public Schools have a lot to be thankful for. Since I joined the school system, I have been proud to work in a district that strives to provide the best for its students. I believe a strong relationship between GPS and Maritime Gloucester is exactly the type of educational collaboration we need, because at Maritime Gloucester, the students engage in immersive, hands-on science experiences. I see the relationship and ongoing collaboration between the two local entities as a way to supercharge the curriculum. Where time is the ultimate constraint and expectations are always rising, the experiences provided by Gloucester Public Schools and Maritime Gloucester supplement, extend, and solidify the learning done inside the classroom. These experiences also expose students to the rich and vibrant history of Gloucester, while simultaneously, simultaneously showing real examples of the local economy. At Maritime Gloucester, the students of Gloucester Public Schools are not only learning biology, geography, physics, technology, engineering, and other scientific principles, they are being inspired to give back to the community in which they were raised. The greatest purpose of science, of science instruction within elementary education is to inspire and motivate, and nothing provides a better platform for that than the settings and activities at Maritime Gloucester." So, I'm not going to tell you who this is, but I might be hiring him soon. Horror. Yeah. But when you're, when you're getting ready for a school committee meeting, and that comes to your desk at three o'clock, you got to bring it in, right? Unsolicited, but that's, that's the type of partnership we have, so. If there's any questions or anything, you guys probably know more about Maritime Gloucester than I do, since I've been there the most recent. We're very, very proud and be supportive of your work, and thank you for the opportunity to do it.
Joel?
So you mentioned in your report, you lamented the fact that the ability to communicate, the parents lumped it in all of it, that, you know, I, until you just spoke, was not fully aware of everything that was going on. I actually ran into, I now realize, one of these sessions coincidentally, two years ago, and just thought the kids really knew their way around, and surprised this random one-off field trip was so well-educated on the facility. But what do you see that could be changed that would, you know, improve your ability to communicate? What are they looking for?
I'd like to be able to do a little bit more of brand marketing in schools, I'd like to be able to, until, there was a gap for years where we weren't able to send something home with the kids in the packet. Last year, one of the, one of the principals allowed us to do that. We have active, I'm just talking about one of our programs here, by the way, and that, and all that data is just for ocean explorers, for the third, fourth, and fifth grade students. But we have middle school, after-school programming for middle school students and, and concentrated work and labs that we do with high school students as well. So, you know, just to be able to express that more clearly, and packets that go home in literature that's brought about with the schools, when you guys talk about it, talk favorably, although it's not like I've heard you'd have it, but, you know, just add a little kind of promotion. We'll do the marketing materials, you know, we'll run it by committee if we need to before it goes home. We don't want to disturb any of the, any of that, but if we could, if we could put a packet in that talks about what the kids are doing. It's always been a kind of thought of mine that at the end of the school year, that parents could come to Maritime Gloucester and, you know, they could have a presentation of what their kids have been doing here the whole year. But that's hard to get the word out, so that sort of thing would be very helpful.
Work on that. Tell me.
Yeah, thank Michael, what you guys do is just, it's somewhat unimaginable that you're a little-
We're six people.
And I, last year, I donated a lot of specimens to your-
Yeah, you did.
And I, I got to know some of the particular sea lab staff, and these people are just phenomenal. Their dedication, their, their zest for the whole place, and their devotion to, to Gloucester is just, needed to be remarked on, because they really do, and you brought it, brought it a step up. So I'd just really like to thank you, you know, firsthand seeing the operation, I'm close and personal, you know, background was just really powerful.
And it was great to have some of those animals you brought into, because, you know, we do, that's what we do, we don't, we keep some that we can't release back in, but every year, we bring in from the harbor, from our harbor into the aquarium, with local fishermen who bring that, bring in what they have. And, and we populate what we're going to have that year that way, and so that kind of community connection is really important to us. You can go to New England Aquarium if you want to see something tropical, but if you want to learn about our habitats and our environment and our harbor, you better come here. Because they don't have it, by the way.
I mean, you know, exactly, what I brought in here was, you know, triggerfish, nine seahorses, you know, pilotfish, just really-
Those nine seahorses had upwards of nine hundred thousand babies, of which five lived. That's, that's the circle of life.
Did she, did Rebecca find, would they let them go?
Yeah, we had. And we had to do it before it got too cold.
Yeah, they were there for a year.
Yeah, it was great. It was great. One of the best marketing calling cards we had all year.
But yeah, they, they have a lot of stuff, and other guys bring them in too, but it's really, and you know, they get the touch tank, there's a lot of hands-on, you know, I mean, like the triggerfish, they would actually go to the window and look right at you.
They do.
They're quite entertaining.
Yeah, you're all invited, by the way, to come on, but they didn't have the students tour, obviously.
They do a mission bite, though.
I actually was able to volunteer in the chapel of my son's class, he was in elementary school, so I definitely suffer stand the enthusiasm and the excitement to learn, you know, in your facility. I think it's always good to have kids go and have change of venue to where they learn and, and have just that whole different influence of different professionals and, you know, the enthusiasm for the topic.
Yeah, and, and they stay with us. I mean, we don't expect all of that, six hundred and seventy-two to stay with us, because they don't, but they do stay with us. A lot of our staff that you're talking about started out with these programs. And, and we closed down, by the way, for these programs. When the kids are there, we're not open, so we close down so that kids can have run of the place and the whole environment, so.
I, I practically lived down there for years during the summer, and it's just amazing that even though you grew up in Gloucester and you grew up in the waterfront and you know a lot of these programs, but you don't realize that how many people from out of town actually enjoy it, when our children. I says, why aren't we doing programs for our own children? I mean, I go down there, Mary, can you come down? You know, children going on lobster boats, going to Tempeh Island, agriculture, looking at, you have also colleges coming down, they have a great lecture room where they're also having lectures and doing things on, you know, coastal climate resilience and, you know, what's happening as far as pollution's in the waters, what we can do. But this is a great program that we have right here in our backyard, and I says, we really need to find out how we can bring our children here too, because there's so many different summer programs where we should all be networking, and that's what they do. They also go on the rides, they go on the Lennon, they're del, they adventure is there. I mean, it's, it's really, really a great program, and they coexist also with the harbor masses, the kids going running around, the coast class right there, there's so many different programs. And hopefully, one day, we have our goal to have it open to all your mom and be able to use it as like a lab base for our students, so that's one of the goals, so.
Sure is. And, and you know, the cultural history that we keep, I didn't talk about it too much either, but we, we really do. For many kids, they're, they're coming to our museum, and, and they're looking up on the walls, and they're seeing the grandparents, and they're seeing the great-grandparents, and they're, and they're, they're slightly removed from the harbor now, and we're, we're that access point, we're that connection to them. We have some of the best classes we have, is actually when we start talking about something, some kid will say, hey, that's, I think that's my own call, and class stops, and they have that conversation about that, so. Yeah, great, thanks so much.
Well-
I just wanted to say, we should get together and talk about how we get the information out.
That'd be great, that'd be wonderful.
Well, thank you, Michael. Thank you. You are, once again, a very, Maritime Center is a huge asset to the students, but the community, and we appreciate it, and as the superintendent, I will talk to-
That's great.
-what we can, how we can promote you better.
Yeah, figure it out, thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, the rush is sorry. Sorry about this. Thank you so much.
And we'll move on to our next item, which is update on our professional development and our assistant superintendent, I believe, is going to leave, leave a break here.
What's that? Yeah, that's great. Is this the same one we had? Is it the same one we had? Yeah. I have to go to the usual, find the channel. simply because it was already seven pages long just going through December, so I thought I would give you the last six months, that's about the most we could digest at once, as well as a preview of some of the main events coming up, and a little bit of connection to the kind of work that you've heard about over the last year or so, or two, with the ECLC Collaborative, I'm going to make some connections to that as well. You do have this in your packet. The first seven pages, as I mentioned, look like this, and Mr. Gross has asked me to read each of these line by-
Okay.
Yes, each column. No, what I'm showing you right now is the first half of the full year professional development calendar. The purpose, as I noted at the beginning, is to provide an overview across the district for planning purposes, to ensure that it's balanced in content and coverage, that reflects our priorities, and that teachers will be able to use this as a resource to identify things coming up well in advance. This is a different format than we've used before, and I'll be showing this out as a live document. It is a Google, a Google document, and it'll be shared out with staff shortly. We are connecting to district priorities, promoting intrinsic motivation, these are directly from our district improvement plan, meeting individual needs, a tiered system of supports with the ECLC program. And what I'll do is I'll just give you a few examples of that to pull you in on both the connections and also the different kinds of professional development at different times. As a key here, things that are in yellow are on a half professional release days, things in blue are on the November 5th, coming up this year, November 5th, full day. Everything in this color, which looks a little different on my screen now, it's almost a, what would you call that color?
Fusion?
Magenta or something, a fusion magenta, is either during the summer or after school hours, and then green during school, substitutes provided if needed. So I, I began with June, because that was after the end of last school year. We have a variety of things that we tried to do in the last month of June. Teachers often express an interest in being able to take something when the, while the year is still fresh, and also before the, the summer weather gets really nice. So we, we began our summer professional development, keys to literacy for high school teachers. We've been working with Melissa Orkin, a consultant who's been helping us evaluate our, our language arts assessment and interventions. One of the, one of the highlights each year are study groups that are led by our teachers, Kristen Parsons and Janet Donovan, two math coaches. Uh, Kristin Parsons and Janet Donovan, two math coaches, uh, led a, uh, a study group. We have another study group, uh, which I'll, I'll go to, uh, here, uh, cultural proficiency book study, and I, I mentioned this one because it came directly out of a book that we had read, a group of us had read with the ECLC program, and those teachers who read it wanted to do a study group, uh, of that book with, with some of their colleagues, and that, the nice thing is that that book, study group, is now working together as a team of five to create a mini course for November, November fifth, and then a fifteen-hour course for the spring, which will satisfy, uh, fifteen PDPs that are required for teachers' recertification, as well as, uh, just general information and training and social emotional learning. So that's really, to me, is one of the best things that comes out of a, a, an ECLC program that is a collaborative with six districts and introduces new things and new, uh, resources that our teachers then decide is compelling enough to turn into our own district course. Yes.
Great, I don't know if I missed it, did you tell us what the ECLC means?
It's the Essex County Learning Community, and it is the six districts, uh, that mentioned, um, in the past, uh, Beverly, Danvers, Gloucester, Rockport, Swansburg, and, and April. Um, and, uh, we've been working together for almost two years with Common Professional Development and teacher teams from elementary and middle school who have come together, um, and it's just really nice to see some of the offshoots of that, and having our own teachers then prepare full-length fifteen PDP courses. Uh, so we had, we had a range of, uh, presenters, book studies, July is probably the latest month, people typically like to take a break during July, but we did a PBIS training by the, uh, May Institute at West Parish, and book studies. August, things began to heat up, uh, we had a lot of work around pilot programming, um, we had, uh, an SEI, SEI course, uh, for ELL students, that is pretty well-attended every year, um, uh, Kristin Stratko, Lisa Alonso, that's a fifteen-hour professional development course in the summer, uh, to sort of extend what people learn, an SEI endorsement course. Project-based learning, uh, science training, MTSS, and then we arrived at the end of August with our new teacher orientation, our math academies, our ELA new teacher academies, and so I'm gonna skip ahead a little bit here, uh, because there's seven, six more pages of this, and I'll just jump to a few key things. UDL webinar started in September, this was after school with a, uh, UDL team, beginning to learn the principles of universal design for learning, and that team then began to meet, um, in October with workshop number one, and that was a full day at the Wiley Center at Endicott College, and these are teams of teachers who are attending these and then who are going to provide in-district professional development over the next several years. Um, just to go back a little bit, we had, uh, new teacher evaluation training, October one events are there, if, again, you've had a chance to take a look at this, if there's anything you have questions about, please ask me if you see something that you're curious about. So in yellow, that was a half-day on October. Uh, more workshops, science training, and October tenth, I wanna point out, because this, um, is day, was day one of facilitating effective department teams, so we have a consultant who is working directly with department teams to work on the issues identified in the turnaround planning that took place, that you had a really good presentation from Mr. Cook earlier this year about the turnaround planning, note of that. We recognize that if teachers are going to be doing all of the things that they have to do on a regular day, and then also working on three key aspects of the turnaround plan, and to be expected to do that during PLC time or department time, that we needed to also provide them with a facilitator who can work directly with them, uh, provide support and resources, and really responds directly to their needs. Uh, so that was day one of that full-day support. Uh, November is coming up, November fifth in blue, and this is a really big day. This is, we have a lot of things going on, uh, we have, uh, full, uh, we have, uh, trainings for our professionals, we have here on November fifth, it's pre-K, uh, through K eight course catalog, and I wanna point out that one. This has come about, uh, this came about last year with the help of a lot of, uh, elementary's teachers. I think we had nearly forty teachers last year who, uh, pitched in to lead sessions, and what we do is we break the day into four sections, seven, four seventy-minute courses throughout the day. This was, we did this at O'Malley, uh, last year, but it was just K through five, uh, and we used, we were able to use the facility there. This year, we're all together, pre-K through A, three hundred and ten particip-people have already registered for all of their courses, so this is, this is kind of a big deal, so if you're out and about on November fifth and want to come by, we'll start at eight-thirty. Um, this is what it looks like, we have a catalog, a linked catalog with instructional practice, um, so for example, general instructional practice, project-based learning, uh, both introductory and advanced to support the middle schools, primarily to support the middle school, um, active processing strategies, climate change workshop, uh, education, non-verbal, uh, communication, uh, we have literacy, uh, courses, and each one of these is linked to a description, so for example, um, if we click on, uh, climate change workshop, go to bookmark, this entire catalog has a description of each, um, of the instructor and what is going to be happening during that session. Um, you're welcome to click through that catalog, if you see something that is of interest, um, please come and check it out. We have, uh, science, technology, engineering, uh, writing and science, uh, we have technology components like Google Suite, Flipgrid, Google Classroom, MobiMax, some special education offerings, social emotional learning, and then we have, uh, teachers are, uh, invited to sign up for one of their four, uh, would be, uh, personal interests, and that might be meditation, yoga, uh, knitting was a, was a big highlight last year, these are taught by teachers, and art instruction, photography, uh, GHS students teach the photography, how to use your, your, uh, iPhone camera to take, uh, real professional photographs and, and videos. So that's in one part of the day, it's fun, it's, uh, exciting for teachers to be able to do something a little bit different, um, and it also speaks to the whole person, um, when you need a break, or you need something a little bit different during the day, it's time for processing, relaxation, and what we find is that some of these things are really, end up not only, um, making life better for the teachers personally, uh, teaching them something new, or, uh, get them interested in something that is good for health and wellbeing, that helps our students. Yoga and meditation are, are the top ones for some reason, I think around November, uh, de-stressing is, is certainly in order. Our scheduling grid looks like this, uh, and this allows staff members to look at the entire day at a glance, color-coded by topic with each of the sessions, and they can use that then to make selections. So it's a pretty big production, this year we have, uh, almost fifty Gloucester teachers who are teaching or co-teaching sessions, and we have, uh, a handful of outside, uh, consultants to do some specializing, so it's a, it's a real group joint effort, um, and it was really successful last year, so hopefully, uh, it will be again this year. Uh, any questions about the, the November fifth?
Bill?
Yes.
Um, what is the process for vetting the course that a teacher has volunteered to, um, teach on that day?
Yeah, so, all of these options here come into, I've had a, a group of teachers who, uh, worked with me to look at the kinds of things that were being offered, to make sure that they were going to be, uh, most valuable and wanted. I've also sent out multiple, uh, surveys to all staff with things that have been suggested, we asked for their needs. Uh, back in June, I asked for teachers to, uh, report in on the kinds of things that they needed and wanted, and then we put out a call for instructors, so already we started with a, a match for what teachers had said they had needed. So for example, how do I say that in Spanish? Was a surprise, um, we had a number of teachers who said, I, I really feel at a loss for welcoming students and their families, uh, where I, I don't know a, a single word of Spanish, so that would be one of the things that came up in June that, that I, I should have thought of, but it surprised, it's a conversational Spanish for teachers. Most of these, um, come directly out of things that teachers are working with and need, reciprocal teaching, lively letters, ed degree, advanced ed degree, right, these are all core curricular instructional components, and so what we do is we ask for instructors to, uh, submit a description of, of what they would be teaching, and we just, just make sure that it's in line. Uh, we also get, um, feedback from the prior year, we ask for recent surveys afterward, and we ask teachers to not rate the instructor, but simply ask the question, how likely are you to recommend this course to one of your colleagues, and how likely are you to utilize what you learned, you know, immediately or in the future? And those two or three questions tell us a lot about quality, and so we've replicated, repeated a lot of those sessions.
So it, it sounds like there's a bit of trial and error, I'm thinking, there's no, there's no verification before the course goes through that the instructor is gonna be a qualified instructor, so for example, if we were a teacher who said, hey, we need someone to teach a cabin building course, oh, I got this, and poor Jonathan who's over here, and I tied one of these, poor cabin making, and Jonathan missed out an opportunity to actually do a really good cabin making course, wouldn't be till the reviews come in, Joel, I wouldn't recommend Joel's cabin making course, and then next year hopefully people get a good cabin making?
Well, here's my, the best way I can answer that, all professional development is, in, in some ways, hit or miss, we get very, very expensive people who come in, and we have some teachers here who could say, yeah, that person probably cost two and a half, three thousand dollars, and they're a big shot, and it was a bust. Um, you know, you can, you can, they can be an expert, they could be fantastic, and then the presentation can be horrible. So I think there's a certain amount of that anyway. Um, we found last year, doing this for the first time with so many instructors, that the, um, I mean, I had so many comments from last year about what a great experience it was, but also lots of compliments about the quality of the teacher. The teachers, they get a, you know, there's a little bit of, uh, planning compensation for this, but it comes nowhere near what they put into this, they put a lot of time and expertise and, uh, planning into this, and they're very proud of it, so, um, I think we did really, really well last year, had very, very high-quality, uh, programs, and, uh, the results were really good in the service. So yeah, there's a little bit of hit or miss, but I think it was mostly hits.
Is there any nudging from the administration? Say for instance, someone says, you know, the high says in Spanish, is there a nudge to, particularly the teachers, hey, you might really go be, be interested in teaching this course, or you just kinda throw it out there and say, would anyone like to teach this course?
Uh, there's a little bit of both. Most of the nudging happens because, uh, it's not everybody feels comfortable being in front of a group or teaching their colleagues, but what I can tell you is that teachers who saw their colleagues teach last year said, ah, I, that was great, I'd like to do something next year. So you had to see it once, and you had, it has to be modeled, and it has to be a good experience, so, uh, a little bit of nudge, but mostly people raised their hands and were interested in doing something. So, out of this, we hope to be able to develop more extensive courses, uh, that, that we can do, uh, you know, five, ten, fifteen-hour courses, that we can build out at least. Any other questions about the November? Okay, I'm gonna jump back to, um, the calendar for a moment, uh, before we move ahead to continued UDL workshops, autism seminars, we have, uh, a number of groups of teachers who go out to conferences, uh, the Learning the Brain Conference is a big one, uh, that's a multi-day, I believe two of these days or even on a weekend, on the, on the Learning the Brain. Um, then we have a December tenth, Building-Based Professional Development at the, uh, elementary schools, and I, I do wanna point out one thing here as we finish up with December, the high school, did you mention what the high school is doing on November fifth? But there are three concurrent sessions, um, and this is right here, uh, using structured discussion strategies to get students to think more deeply, two, becoming an expert on what higher-order thinking is and what it is not, and planning and engaging lessons with adolescent brain and mind. All three of these are absolutely closely aligned to the goals that were developed during the improvement plan. If you remember, one of the cornerstones was about higher-order thinking, and that's what November fifth is all about, what is it, what is it not, how do we do it, and how do we activate those, um, minds, and what our instructional practices that we can use, so the whole day is, is focused around that. And I'm gonna finish this segment with a look at, um...
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
Who's teaching at the high school?
Those three, because the high school has its own staff doing a lot of the half-days so far, and also, I'm gonna show you in a moment, uh, the high school teachers are doing a lot of their own, uh, training of colleagues during staff meeting time, during PLC time, uh, this is an opportunity to bring in some, um, experts, so those three are done by, uh, people from, uh, let's say from, uh, Rebus Associates, um, and, I'm trying to think of what the other, uh, I can, I can look it up, but we have a couple of consultants.
I don't want to, external or external?
Those are external, we, so, uh, what I'll show you right now is a balance at the high school, and, um, sorry, I'm gonna have to make people busy for a second, I'll move this quickly, and to, uh, that's a long catalog, um, uh, professional development overview for the high school, I wanted to focus in on this, it is the school that went through the turnaround planning in the spring, and out of this is what I, I think is a really, really tight, uh, plan, with all available time, not just the, the professional days, but all possible time, the PLC time and the department meetings, um, any specialized time during the day, release time during the day, um, and these are all connected to key goals from the turnaround plan. Uh, revise, analyzing, so during, um, PLC and department meetings, they'll be focusing on analyzing and revising assessments for alignment with standards and higher-order thinking, and they'll be working on instructional practice and revise, uh, revising classroom activities, so they're, there's, they're, they're not covering nuts and bolts ever anymore at those staff meetings, they are actually doing the work... They are actually doing the work of revising and refining curriculum and instruction. Keys to Literacy, we partnered with Keys to Literacy to have instruction and coaching support for our literacy and social studies teachers. All of these kinds of things are happening during sub-release or department time. And then on the school YPD on earlier, it's a full day. Active processing, using cognitive strategies to connect with students the best way we possibly can. These are the components I just read, followed with an SEL component in December. And then look at the reading strategies, the keys to, the keys to literacy strategies in the spring. School-wide PD, faculty meetings, a monthly focus. The turnaround plan is front and center. We have embedded support for PLC teams from Carol Rager that I mentioned. And then we also have some after-school growth teams. And each of these teams are meeting to focus on a different topic that they are researching and leading each other. So just wanted to point out that that's the sort of comprehensive overview of the high school, very closely aligned to the school improvement plan and the turnaround. And we'll be developing the same kind of plan and detail for the middle school. And I believe we have a meeting this tomorrow to begin talking about that.
Do you or Rich sit in on any of these sessions?
I meet weekly with Mr. Cook in reviewing and planning. I also haven't met with any consultants who are working. We meet with them prior. And then I have been, Dr. Sapphire does visits to PLCs throughout the district, including the high school. And then I also help to plan the PD sessions with Mr. Cook. But unfortunately, I also have to be a member of others on those days. So most of my work happens in the planning and the meetings up until those moments. And then I, because they're in common with the elementary middle school, I'm often having to be at those. So I have a lot of contact with them in the thinking, planning, and preparation. And Dr. Sapphire certainly sits in and visits on a variety of those sessions.
The schedule for the rest of the year that's not shown, is it somewhat fluid or is it locked in or is it just left out?
No, I do have the live document if you want to see it, but most, we front-load a lot of the PD, happens on the October, September, and December. So there are fewer of the half-days. The spring is mostly involved with the teaching teams and committees and the PLC work. And there's about 10 pages of all of those kinds of things. But they sort of, big focal point pieces, the big pieces happen through December.
And so you'd expect that the, I guess what I'm trying to get at, I looked through the chart and noticed O'Malley was light on science instruction. There's one dedicated thing for eighth grade, nothing for sixth and seventh, other than broader ones. And obviously I assume the turnaround plans were to have that be a focus. And so I was curious if there was, you know, there was fluidity to jumpstart, get ahead of that?
Yeah.
Or wait until next summer to start working science?
So I'll give you an example of how fluid it is at the moment. Because with a new principal and the collaboration with the UCLC program, we wanted to make sure that we were following those, this, left the room to build that this fall. I met last week, actually it might have been Monday, no, it was last week, with the science department at the middle school and the principal. And in that meeting, we outlined eight monthly trainings that will happen throughout the rest of the year. And we'll support it through a grant, but that'll be, it'll be a combination of contractual time with a supplemented hour probably, so that there's a good two-hour block. And that training's going to be a mix of peer training, but also for the young experts as needed. So the answer to the fluidity is it's absolutely there. And that, the science piece is not reflected on there because we met last week and they have not determined the actual dates for each of those monthly trainings. But that should come in the next two weeks and then I can put it on the calendar. So what I'd be able to show you for what, take a look in the spring, is how a lot of those pieces then got developed overall.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And we look forward to taking in on some of this.
Do you need to keep this on?
No, thank you. Can I just add? I just want to thank you. This is obviously very, you know, strong work, but it's also very thoughtful work. And, you know, supporting professional development, supporting our teachers is, so, you know, none of us are looking in a vacuum. We always can learn and continuously improve. So I think this is great. All these things are being offered and being taken advantage of.
And it's a lot of fun working with all the teachers who are planning all of these things too.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to what has become the highlight of the evening, as we all understand, the superintendent's report.
As always, I thank Mr. Chair for your gallant introduction. Item number one has to do with KAM caucus. This is promoted and put on by the Gloucester Chamber of Commerce. It's meeting on Friday, Friday morning at 7:30. Normally, they have a caucus with a focus on education and then later on in the year they have one legislative caucus where they invite local representatives and senators, et cetera. Because of the legislation that's pending with the State House for the Student Opportunity Act, they're going to be putting both together. So we'll have an opportunity to report out a little bit on what's taking place in and around the district. Manchester will be there, Rockport will be there, a number of leaders from our local colleges as well, along with the aforementioned local elected and appointed officials. It's a good opportunity for us to share ideas and exchanges, hear a little bit more about the progress that's being made with the legislation. A couple of issues. Number one, the accountability piece. If more money is going to be available through Chapter 70 for various districts, there are, there is an outline that are an expectation that there will be some accountability measures, but nobody's quite sure what those are at this point. So I hope to ask that question on Friday. The second piece is that the governor came out with some numbers, estimates of what Chapter 70 funding would be available in FY '21 for districts, but the head of the Joint Education Committee and Roger Hatch from the Department of Education have debunked those figures, saying that they don't take into account all of the calculations involved. So we don't have accurate numbers at this point. So hopefully we can press that issue a little bit and see what's going on. Item number two is just an update on the GHS Fieldhouse with all the work that's been going on, the East Gloucester Project, et cetera. The work on the Fieldhouse continues to go forward. Doran Riddier have contracted to do that work and are in the design phase. There are three main issues that we have been consulted on, which have to do with the type of flooring outside and around the wood basketball court, what the bleachers should be, and the dimensions of the track itself. With respect to the flooring, we've been advised to speak with Swamp Scott. Brian Lefatter, our athletic director, has done so. And there is a, there's a material called Super X Performance by a corporation by the name of Mondo, Mondo Biondo. And it is recommended, since we're not going to be creating wood for the ant, for the auxiliary courts, we do need a new type of flooring. This is the type of flooring that's used at the Reggie Lewis Center. It's used in Swamp Scott as well. Very durable, but also it's safety related as well because if kids are going to be playing basketball, can they make cuts and the types of motion? Obviously, it takes place on the basketball court and it will not promote, but rather, you know, protect the kids as much as possible. So we're looking into that and so far, the reviews are favorable as far as this particular rubberized material. In regard to the track sizing, outdoor tracks, there's a general size, that's, you have the general expectation. Indoor tracking, not so much. And we're trying to maximize what we can without intruding on the basketball courts and so on and so forth. So the Doran Riddier is trying to work out what the size of the indoor track will be. Under any circumstance, it's not going to be an issue within season track meets. There may be some qualifications with the MIAA with respect to what the dimensions of a track need to be for the postseason tournaments. So we're sort of grappling with that and that's to be determined. And the third piece has to do with the bleachers. And what we're being advised is that there's a new plastic material, that none of the materials, whether it's wood or plastic or anything in between, are completely durable and are not, there isn't the potential for some sort of damage. But this new plastic is supposed to be very, very good. Replacement materials can also be purchased. So if there's an area that has a problem and you've got it in storage, you can pull it out and it can easily be replaced. If you go back to wood, usually if there's damage in the whole row, it has to be replaced. So wood is good, but it's not necessarily any more durable than what this plastic material is. And replacement and costs and time and everything else are negative factors if we're considering what materials to use for the, for the bleachers. So that's what's being discussed at this point in time. I'll keep you updated as to when some other, you know, decisions are firmly made. And of course, Doran Riddier is working on the substructure and what needs to be done to ensure that that is going to support any activity that takes place in the Fieldhouse. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. So currently in the Fieldhouse, there are or were curtains to kind of hide storage stuff. And I know in the past, that just doesn't look well kept. Is there any thought to storing, you know, hurdles? I mean, are they thinking about that in terms of part of this design so that it's adequately done, so that it's not just a rock and a corner?
I've not been part of any conversation about that. I can certainly bring it to the, to the conversation and see if there's, I guess you're talking about some sort of enclosure?
I don't know what the solution is, but it's time to ask about it so that it gets built into the plan. I mean, we have chairs in there that, you know, they...
Is this going to be something that's going to require the formation of a building committee?
I don't believe so.
So we're not going to be bringing any help from the state? This is all on the city board? So then, I guess then we just put this out there. One of the old salts relayed to me, the bracity of this, but I passed it along, that apparently, theoretically, the design of the Fieldhouse was, like, as far as the actual exterior dimensions of that addition that was put on was designed to make it able to have a substantial indoor track. And it was actually to the detriment of some other sports. There was a whole, again, what I'm told is that the final design makes the highest and best use of that Fieldhouse, a track and field centric facility that also happens to have a basketball court and a few other things inside of it. And so where here, the track is being resized, I know that there are, there are literally some constraints that don't make it otherwise a really basketball-centric facility, et cetera. I would just be nervous, I wouldn't want to see mediocre results and everything. If this truly is, what was told to me exactly, if this really isn't a facility that is designed in shape and size to be indoor track and field centric, I hope we would maximize that so at least we're using it for an unintended purpose rather than having, I know the basketball court where it is is not ideal. Viewing the game isn't ideal, you're so far away because the track is getting in the way of view and the court and that sort of thing. But my understanding that that was all deliberately designed to make it an indoor track and field center. And so that would be, yeah, that's true. That would be in the minds of people making decisions though, where the track should go, how big it should be, et cetera.
Yeah, my understanding is they're not looking to make it smaller. They're looking to see whether they can maximize the size of the track.
The building committee question is, is not, it's in the charter, isn't it?
Okay, yeah.
It is something and it's triggered by the dollar, not, it's not my recollection. So we should look into that. They may need them.
But the MNCPA paid for the first one.
Yeah, they're not, we're not going to get any help by this one. It was, it was a different organization. It wasn't the same people we deal with today. And there's, there's a reason that they don't exist anymore.
That tells you what renovations are like.
Yeah.
That's all I need to say.
Continue, sir.
Well, thank you, sir. It's been mentioned earlier in this meeting, but the Mass Association of School Conferences and the Association of School Committees have their annual conference, November 6th through the 8th. A few of us will be going up to see what's involved. And I've just given you a list. This is on the list for Thursday's workshops. I don't see any central theme. I went online to see if there was a central theme and there's nothing really, there's no absolute organizing principle. But as you can see, some of the listings, branding your district and your goals, 70 minutes on Chapter 70, keeping our schools safe, working with your collaborative to increase district capacity, school law, building community partnerships and strengthening policies to support students' wellness and improve educational outcomes, school committee self-evaluation, recruiting a diversified educated workforce, our family institute for student success, engaging families and partners. So there's a broad-based approach to the workshops this year and we'll have a chance to report back after we've attended. The House, state legislature, has closed out the FY '19 budget. They've, as a result, they have been able to add some additional funding. Some you've already heard about. They've added $2 million to the Special Education Circuit Breaker, which brings the state funding to what had originally been proposed, namely 75% for the state share of Circuit Breaker money, over and above four times the per pupil cost. That has amounted to $163,000 increase for Circuit Breaker here for the Gloucester Public School District. Some other monies have been freed up for student transportation reimbursements for homeless students on federal McKenney Venda. But our research shows that this is really not going to have much of an impact on any funding that might help us with respect to transportation in that particular regard. Item number five is the aforementioned Sustained Plan for Improvement. What was originally referred to as the turnaround plan, the state in its infinite wisdom has changed that to something called the Sustained Plan for Improvement. They felt that the turnaround was too pointillistic as opposed to suggesting that the plan that you come up with is something that really should be sustained over a long period of time. So that certainly makes sense. As Greg mentioned, we'll be meeting with representatives from the Department of Ed tomorrow at 11:30 along with the principal from the middle school to hear more about the getting written guidance related to expectations for schools with low performing groups. And again, the need for the Sustained Improvement Plan at O'Malley is not a result of the overall performance, or rather due to the high needs groups, subgroups, low performance. So that's the area that will be the focus of this particular Sustained Plan for Improvement. And also tomorrow, very exciting day, the Tiered Focus Monitoring Group is also coming out from the Department of Ed. That's what used to be known as the Coordinated Program Review. I've mentioned before in this forum that they have changed their format from a six-year cycle with a mid-year at three, now to every two years. And just as we had wrapped up our previous Coordinated Program Review, we were then brought back into the cycle. We did our self-evaluation last year and they'll be coming in to organize and coordinate what the, what the, what the procedures and the report is going to be going forward. Unlike a Coordinated Program Review, which can look at a whole variety of areas, including the vocational Title I, English language learners, and et cetera, we're only focusing in this particular round on civil rights and special education. So tomorrow is the beginning of both the work that we'll be doing with the middle school and also our self-evaluation. and also our self-evaluation.
My sound off. I apologize. I...
Why am I so...
Sorry. I have moved at least seven superintendents. Is that what you wanted to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a second? Okay, say hi. I oppose XUN. And we will move on to our committee reports. And first up is, we've already done the wellness, I believe. So we'll move on to our program subcommittee?
Program subcommittee met on October 10th. The items we discussed, no action came out of that meeting because a lot of these were topics that really didn't require action at the time or required more work to be able to come up with proposed changes. So we talked about attendance language as it related to absences. So that Principal Cook was with us and we talked about primarily this term unexcused absence as it relates to students being ill, right? And it's kind of a word that connotes something negative. You know, it's kind of normal that kids get sick. So he's going to look around and try to figure out that narrative language a little bit better so that there is different categories under those allocated absences that we know are probably common with kids and not the exception of such against the long-term illness or college visits and the other ones, et cetera.
I hope you hope that parents all fully understand that they have a buffer each quarter of six absences. Six times four is 24 absences in 180 school years. That's a whole other ballgame. But if a child is out for a day, is an illness, they have to go to a col-, not a college, but something along those lines, what we'd like folks to understand is that it's one, and you still have a buffer. You still have five other absences. Further, if a child is out for extended illness or something along those lines, doctor's note is going to exonerate and excuse those absences. And third, there's an appeal process. So if there are complications, there's no reason why the parent and the student can't go and speak with administration, go through the appeal process and have those absences excused. Second, if a child does go beyond the six in a given year, in a given quarter, they do receive what's called an absence failure. It brings them to a 65. However, if they can then turn that around in the next quarter, and I believe three is the magic number, then there's a waiver in that whatever their grade was, if they got an 80 or an 85 in the first quarter, it gets reinstated. So there's an opportunity for them to demonstrate that whatever took place in the first quarter or that particular quarter was an aberration. So hopefully, to just close out and repeat, we can put language in that will provide parents with a sense of comfort, understanding that there's a buffer zone and an appeal process and that it's a generous attendance policy.
Okay. We are reviewing crowdfunding policies, so there's nothing to report on that. We looked at some examples of other districts and some model language. And we have some work to do on the crowdfunding. Go ahead.
I could be a pest. I listened to a webinar sponsored by the Mass Association of School Superintendents, conducted by an organization called Donors Choose. And they're one of a number of organizations, hopefully that they certainly have received certifications from auditing agencies. And what they do is they solicit donors for proposals that are submitted to them by teachers. Teachers have a particular proposal, speak to the principal about it, and then they send it out to this national organization. This national organization finds donors, but no cash is transacted. Rather, if somebody's looking to buy lab supplies or a 3D printer or anything under the sun, they find a donor and that donor provides the monies for it. Then the purchasing takes place through the organization and what the teacher receives are the materials that they had initially requested. So it takes all that money out of the way. To date, they have, this company, this particular company has raised over $29 million, all in support of teachers' projects. And one of the other advantages is it sort of takes some of the pressure off the local ask that seems to take place every year, which places a bit of a burden on many of the folks in the city of Boston that do provide donations and the like. They provide us with a model policy. Shrewsbury is currently engaged working with this particular company. So we'll continue looking at the policies. We'll reach out to Shrewsbury, check in with the MAS to make sure that everything seems to be on the up and up and see if we can craft a policy.
Right, and part of the policy is having some oversight from the district, right? In terms of the requests that go out there to make sure they're consistent with priorities and...
And if they're innovative, then probably so.
I have a question. The money goes, you said the money goes to the organization. Is that the school?
The donor, whoever the donor is, is solicited by DonorsChoose.org.
Right.
So whatever financial arrangement they have, that's where money's transacted.
Correct.
And then the invoices and the purchasing and the requests go through them and then go to the teacher.
Were you missing a step? We need to accept it.
Well, that's a given. I didn't miss anything. That's just assumed.
Well, everybody has to go through that loop even before the money's back.
Right, of course. It's a given.
I just, you know, so it has to go through this room too?
Any, yeah.
The question I start with, well, I don't know what has to go through that.
There's no money transacted, as I said.
It's through the school committee for approval.
Yeah.
There's a gift, there's a gift coming.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
And we accept it. We have to accept it. That's, I mean, it's...
Yeah, no, Tom's great. Tom's great, I just wanted to go through the same.
Raising money to buy a piece of a playground. We don't do anything until we accept it.
Arson? Yeah, Arson, yeah.
Yeah, that's, Arson is the arrangement that originally...
Right, because that doesn't come through here at all.
Not then. If it's still being used, then it would be, any monies would have to go to the CFO. But this would take that...
No, we don't want to do that, you know? We want to facilitate that.
Well, this is, the program subcommittee's one.
Yeah, so they got to look at...
And there are sites. The school committee administration would have to approve any sites through which these kinds of arrangements were taken.
Why is Oprah looking at it, not being up? Because it's a money thing.
Well, it's a policy thing and it's for all money.
The different subcommittees take your policies.
That's good.
That's a really, not that I want it.
Sounds like you want it.
I don't, I just, that's the stuff, the stuff that needs to be sorted out is all money stuff.
Nothing's happening.
Yeah, I know, I have a lot of work.
Program obviously can craft a draft policy and then it can be shared with the... So they will have, hopefully, two subcommittees that will support over the after it comes to this full commitment.
Okay. The other two items were referrals. One was related to the Mad Hop Ball program and the instructional practice. Would you like to take that?
And study halls? And the issue of instructional practice and study halls? Is that what you're talking about?
Instructional practice of the Mad Hop Ball program first.
Oh, that? Well, it's a little unclear as to what is being asked, but I'm under the impression that it has to do with gender equity, namely that if children are being taught to dance, that both partners, male and female, should have an opportunity to know how to lead and how to follow. Is that a clear sense of what's being asked?
Yeah, and I want to apologize that I missed this subcommittee meeting despite there were two referrals that came from me. I apologize to everyone who was at that.
What is irony, Paul?
I think I, there was a concern about partner selection, about leading. I thought just, you know, even the presentation of the performance itself, there are some, how do I say this? There's language used throughout the program that may not be as inclusive as it needs to be at 2019. And I want to make sure that all students are, but no one's being ostracized or being inhaled into a description or category or activity that they are otherwise uncomfortable with. I feel does not represent who they are.
Well, we're prepared to bring recommendations to the organizers of the Mad Hop Ball. But it would be helpful to know in specifics what some of the concerns are so that we can speak to those and see what sort of reaction slash response we get. But conceptually, I think we all understand in an age of equity, we want to bring that kids particularly feel good about themselves and to be able to exchange roles and get on with it.
So then please ask with the superintendent to have those conversations. Okay, and then the last, the last item was your referral, Joel, of study halls. And according to state law, the high schools require to have 990 hours of structured learning time and study halls are not structured learning time, they're non-directed time. So that's why they were removed from the high school. They do have this new schedule change, having longer homerooms every third day. And Principal Cook explained that that is structured learning time. They take care of a lot of things that have to do with learning and that. So there are opportunities for those kinds of different sections of time. But that, we need to stay within the 990 hours.
So just to be clear, if there was a teacher in there working with you, it's structured learning time. If you're just sitting there by yourself doing your homework, it's not.
And that's a renegatory contractual issue?
And well, it's...
They have directed study and a few other things like that for students who are...
But the more you universalize the concept of directed study, which it would be great if we did, that means that teachers who normally teach five sections would only teach four. So how does that impact class size? And if it is going to significantly impact class size, then what do you need to do in terms of staffing in order to offset that? So there's a cost involved.
It's a discussion for budget season too.
Some of the school ask along there?
Yeah, that's a discussion for budget season too. B and F?
B and F. Bear with me, I couldn't take any notes. So we have here, one, it was abbreviated meeting because you guys had the, after it was posted at 5:00, you guys had to debate that night. So we had to, we went through the highlights. And that's one reason why we're having another meeting. One of the things that was notable in there, I think, that, you know, we've known pretty much, which is what figures, is that 86.55% of our budget goes to salaries and benefits. So that's 14.45% that goes to the other stuff. Now, we don't, the city pays for the facilities, the fuel, the lights and all that stuff. So that is on the city's budget. So if we add that back in, it would, we'd change that figure a little bit. Anyway, that's just an interesting side note. The basketball hoop's a GHS. Joe Vasito's going to see about contacting the vendor. Who else do we see here? We did have carbon monoxide detectors on there, but we didn't, do we have them? No, we didn't have carbon monoxide detectors on, which is vague. But anyway, we are, I actually called the CIO today to see if I could talk, if it was okay to talk to the fire chief about how we would or, you know, what the necessity is and how we would go about it. Because they should be located only five feet above the ground because carbon monoxide is heavier than air. And the buildings that have oil fired, oilers are much less at risk than the gas ones. I guess I have to talk to the... Or you guys have a meeting with the DPW?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Could you ask them how many of our buildings are of gas and how many are oil?
Sure.
Because gas is the primary villain in CIO. We had a lengthy discussion about the vape detectors with the principal. There's still answers to be had about installations. It appears that they are hardwired, whether they're... Anyway, it appears that they're hardwired. The principal, we are in a moratorium right now with vape. So, but of course, you just, you know, 45 minutes away, you can go get all you want. And I don't know if you can order it online in Massachusetts or not. But anyway, he thinks that, the responses that he's hearing is it actually does do a determinant. It would be a mixture of active and inactive detector heads. You know, the active ones are $1,000 and the inactive's worth like 200, I think? Yeah, I don't think, but he's coming back, he's coming back next week to give us, or no, the one after that, the November one. Because it, he needed a month to get the information. But we looked at that, they are, you know, you move them around. They do go to phones if you want, that way it can text you. And, but they say mostly in places what they have to do is use the hall camera whilst he was leaving, you know, at the time that it was sent. Which, so that was, the lights at West Parish that aren't shutting off, that's a contractor issue. I guess IT department of the DPW can't solve that. So we need to get in there with, has there been any movement on that?
We're going to check Tuesday at our next meeting.
That seems like an odd one that we can't just go in and program that.
That was the one, they're on a program.
Oh, it's either the leads, you know, and real good leads, then it keeps the lights on all the time. That works out well. But anyway, that's, yeah, it's part of that. Let's see. Food Service came in with their list of items that needed to be replaced. It wasn't, it needed more work, but the short version is it's around $100,000 worth of equipment that's not installed. Major items that were 22 just to purchase is the ovens at the high school, which would be very good to have in there so that they can do things in there like oven fries and things like that would help. Because they can't do, there's a, and a lot of the ovens in the schools work marginally. But Martha Jo is putting up a list of her priority. And so it's, today, now will be available to us next week, I believe.
Do they fix the things that are wrong with West Parish as far as it inside the kitchen?
I don't know.
Vigilator's not working, some of the programs aren't working in the kitchen. And it's not being reported. So I get complaints from people working there telling me they need to put a complaint in. And I said, because things are under warranty. If we don't get them ahead of time. So I think you should be sure of knocking them, please.
Yeah, West Parish issues and...
Yes, go tell them to take a nice, good thorough walk in the kitchens and some other things that weren't working. I'll get, I'll get to the list.
All right, thank you. Good. So, yeah, we have that. And so I think I also thought, just because of the way the ordinance is written, that maybe we should just do alert the city and the city council that the schools have this need. It's just, it's not an ask, it's just an alert that we have this need. We had, at the last meeting, voted to close out some involving funds that totaled almost $24,000. And we were under the impression that that would fall to our general fund. But in accordance to state law, it has to go to the city's general fund. So that was another thing I have a call into Mr. DeSino today. I wanted to discuss him in Hamilton possibly, when it is certified, if we could get that money back. Because we wanted to hear market for this purpose. So we'll see what we can get out of your office for that. And let's see. Advertising, we talked about the advertising for the food service to hear... Advertising, we talked about the advertising for the, for the food service vehicle that Maria Puglisi actually was extremely instrumental with, she's not here tonight because I would recognize to have maybe at the next meeting. In getting this vehicle from Sudbay's for the next three years, a brand-new excursion, was it?
Equinox.
Equinox. To drive our food service deliveries around. I know the alternative school gets fed by it and preschool also. And then the supplies that the little elementary schools can't store, they are delivered via this vehicle. And we discussed about putting courtesy of Sudbay Automotive and it's not, and we, it was, we actually, we have a vote on that.
Yeah, the proof. The proof is of the standstill is going to be at the, available at the next meeting.
Okay, so, you know, we asked for a pre-proof, but it's nothing, but, but the, our advertisement policy, it's completely aligned with it, so there's no issue. And I believe that's it. You'll have a much more detailed.
All right. We've already done the wellness modification. We have, under action, we have an acceptance of our Perkins grant in the amount of twenty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. This is for vocational education and I believe that was used for, used for materials.
Yeah, this year about sixteen thousand dollars of a twenty-three thousand dollar grant for HP Workstations. They use a lot of software for drafting and the like and what they have is outmoded. And so a lot of this is for, for those particular towers, those workstations. And this is stipend to the program leader as well. This is the third of three years whereby we can use the grant for that particular stipend. And then just a couple of miscellaneous items.
Okay, we have a motion to, I'll make a motion to that we accept the Perkins grant in the amount of twenty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. It's unanimous. And then we have the approval of an out-of-state field trip, which is the major's classroom on Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty, to Friday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty. And it is to the Cody Outdoor Classroom in Freedom, New Hampshire. And we do this every year and as Mrs. Carney pointed out, it was very successful last year with the new vendor. And I believe that we had received that letter last year. I don't know whether it got read or it was, I knew I'd seen it, but it was, it sounded very familiar and it was very, very positive. So I make a motion that we approve the field trip.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Joel?
Quick procedural question. Field approval form, I always have fun with these, I think. We try and do too much with this one sheet of paper. So theoretically, this is in all five elementary schools, shouldn't we have all five principals signing off somewhere that all five are in line with this happening, right? There's some signatures on the principal, not sure which one signed it, but I think, you know, again, just, I'm using dummy eyes here for users form, I think you either have five come in, one from each school, or you'd have all five principals sign the form because all five schools are being impacted. And that, you know, I think it should hold up to me tonight, but that might be like a piece of administrative book you're going to do post co. And the second thing that I just want to, you know, thank you for coming tonight to speak about this and she's right, you know, I went to major's classroom in nineteen ninety-six and I have to this day vivid memories, all excellent, like, you know, I get excited when people talk about major's classroom. I'm never going to major's classroom, so obviously it's possible for me to continue.
So that's a, it's a good point about the form. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. And we'll move on to MSBA update, days across the school. The, it's the middle inning today, I believe. We've been, you know, trying to pull together the odds and ends that people needed, different things about whether we're going to install, whether we're going to redistrict and this kind of thing. They've been asking over and over again, but I haven't, I haven't heard, but I believe that the, the prefer schematic program was submitted today. At least that's what we, it was supposed to happen. Haven't heard that it did happen.
Haven't heard it did.
But we will, I believe we will get an update as to what that we did last time and then we'll get the last, we'll get an update about what was, you know, in the big book that we might not know about.
We updated our cover letter that went with the preliminary design program. We sent in a letter that says that there is no consideration of redistricting or reconfiguring the K through five arrangement for the consolidated school. Mr. Dunn put together an overview of the EGS budget statement, going back to the joint committee that we had at O'Malley when we almost froze to death, if you recall any. Hard to forget. And Garrett worked on a budget statement today that looked at staffing, facilities, custodial care and management to try to at least estimate to what extent, if any, there would be savings through the consolidated program. So we were able to put all that stuff together in a relatively short period of time.
So that's about it. The preschool location continues to be negotiated and is there anything else that anybody would like to bring up before we do? Joel?
I suppose I made a referral that Ms. Steele's suggestion would be taken up by B and F, maybe have, has the administration come in and just say, you know, is there in fact, if he says, if I could hire one more person to do X, it would actually greatly improve my ability to follow turnaround plan or find out whether or not that number is too big to be reckoned with, but should be one time, right?
But to be clear, we did, we did support in this, we knew we had turnaround plan going into this budget season and we supported many, many of the things that are now being done that are in the budget. But it'd be worth asking questions if there's something, if there's something else that we don't have that money would buy.
I should add, by our entering into the plan process, Department of Ed's process, we could choose an alternate, that by using that process, we're eligible for a twenty-five thousand dollar grant for developing the plan as well. So we'll be applying for that. We'll hear more about the specifics tomorrow.
Okay. Anything else?
Get the Halloween party Sunday.
Oh, oh, speaking of Halloween, what was the town that decided that was going to change Halloween so it's always a weekend night? It was a field.
It's going to be Sunday afternoon. There's so many things happening this weekend. The turbine, don't forget on Saturday, there's nice energy and you look at the turbines and you have a little dog, there's the dog card from one of the judges, it's a little costume, so put your dog in the costume. That's Saturday. My Halloween party, our Halloween party is Sunday, two to four, with hayrides and jumping things and haunted house in the basement. So if you're asking for a budget, take a walk down the haunted house. But there is a great weekend, there's Friday, the toddlers go walking around Main Street and then, as we all know, downtown for Halloween night is open anyways from four to six, so that's for, safe Halloween. I wanted to be a witch this year, but I just did the hair for nothing.
Okay. Anything else before we go? Motion, George Aaron?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. See you soon.